Welcome to the October 15th, 2024 City Council Meeting. I'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be before the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to get a better place to live and work. Amen. To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchey.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Eleven present, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Kathleen M. Kathy Elliott-Havy. Born in Lowell, daughter of Teresa Elliott and the late Francis Elliott Jr. Kathy attended St. John Dock School in Lowell and was a graduate of presentation at Mary Academy in Hudson, New Hampshire, class of 1980. Kathy was kind and generous. She had a tremendous soul. She had a special gift for making people smile, always helping anyone in need and especially loved animals. She was a wonderful mother to her two children, David and Jessica, who were the focus of her life until the end. For many years Kathy operated a home daycare center and later in life worked in various retail positions before retiring. Kathy was a CCD teacher and volunteered at many school events. She will be deeply missed by all who knew her. Kathy is survived by her son David Chadwick and his wife Tina, her daughter Jessica Chadwick and her partner Leandry, her grandchildren Olivia, Trevor, and Hannah Chadwick, and Crystal and Leandry Colong Jr., her siblings Lisa Brown, her husband Richard, State Representative Rodney Elliott and his wife Laurie, Sharon and her husband Glenn, Patty Anne and her husband Walter, as well as many nieces and nephews. We offer our condolences to the family. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any others? Mr. Clerk, the lights. May they rest in peace. Two, Mayor's business 2.1, communication revoked, soon participation, motion accepted, filed by Counselor Belanger, seconded by Counselor Chow, other affairs say I oppose motion passes 2.2, presentation for the pole memorial library. We have with us tonight our director and also some members of the board as well as employees, Bridget Cooley. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager and City Counsel. On the library, it's been so grateful for all the community's support, those on the city council who supported the bookmobile as well as the allocation of the American Rescue Plan funds that support this project. I have an amazing team, so you're not going to hear from me very much longer tonight, who are really, really willing to do the work, to share the library with the community and make sure that people throughout the city are aware of what the library has to offer as well as acting as community goodwill. Two of our staff are unable to be here this evening. They are Charles Palo-Lilly and Ryan Thomas, but I am so proud to introduce the bookmobile supervisor Gwen Young-Hans and bookmobile library assistant Paul Malconian to share some of their accomplishments over the past year with the bookmobile.
Hi, my name is Gwen and I'm going to talk us through the slideshow. As you can see up there, that is our bookmobile and it is really a joy to have this wonderful piece of equipment to bring the library out to the community. Next slide, please. Oh, it's me. How do I do this? Okay, there we go. And these are some pictures that we were able to take in the last year. This is Paul. So, we have year-round stops and we also have seasonal stops. Year-round stops involves having a place inside. I won't read them out to you, but we have a mix of various different places that we go. And we're actually in the process of transitioning to our winter program, so we will be transitioning indoors because the weather is getting colder, so here we go. And we have some seasonal stops. These are outdoor stops and we have had the privilege of going weekly to the Community Health Center. That's been really great and we've also done a lot of partnering with the Historical Park so at various times of year, but also very much this summer. And we had six weeks of partnering with the rec department this summer, which was really amazing. We really got to serve a lot of children in Lowell and it was really fun. We got to see various places in the city, so. These are some of the places that we go and we do pop-ups. This is also a seasonal activity. We're not doing this when, you know, there's snow on the ground. So these are some of the parks that we visited in the spring through now. Here we go. And these are some of the events that we've been invited to participate in. So, the Kids Week and the Placation are with Lowell National Park and then various other organizations have contacted us to either have people sign up for library cards or just through outreach. A lot of them, you can see it's very children-focused, but not only. And then we had less events in the summer just because we had a very full schedule with the rec department, which was really a great opportunity. You can see me there. That's at Lowell Community Health and that is one of the high-level members that works there and her name is escaping me, I apologize. So, and we did a bunch of back-to-school events in August and also we've done a few more. And yeah, we are looking forward to a bunch of October events related to Halloween and also the City of Lights, which is a highlight of the end of the year. So, let's talk about the impact of the bookmobile. We're serving residents from ages zero to 100-plus. That's a lot of age groups and that's also very exciting. One of my favorite parts of the job is actually getting to work with kids at one stop and seniors or people in nursing homes at the next. It's really amazing. Everybody has fun stories and it's a lot of fun. We've given out more than 235 library cards at the bookmobile stops. We've served more than 8,100 residents at the stops and events. We've answered over 500 questions. We've had over 450 materials be checked out directly from the bookmobile. And we've been actively working with the community in order to shape the collection, not just on the bookmobile, but also in the library. We're getting a lot of feedback about, you know, gaps in our collection, which is normal for a library, but we're really excited because we have all this additional feedback and we can really, you know, mold the collection to be what the community wants. So, I am going to turn it over to Paul. Oh, last slide, sorry. Thank you. All of you here, we couldn't do this work without your support and we really, really appreciate it.
It's a very handsome man.
It's really a privilege.
It's a great photo. It's a fantastic photo.
So, I'm going to turn things over to Paul.
Thank you, Gwen. Thank you, counselors. Just briefly, you know, we're about a year in. It's been about a year since CJ and I, my colleague, he's not here tonight because we have an event on Saturday, so he's off today. And it's been, it's been a great year. I've been involved in program implementation for years, over the years, many times, and this one's been pretty smooth considering none of us had done a bookmobile before. And we've gone from sort of some sort of like starting a business with no customers and we're pretty much been out two or three times a day, most days now. Whether it's the regular stops that we hit regularly or pop-ups around the city, that's just we implemented so we could hit all the different neighborhoods. And we'd like to say if any counselor, any of you guys have a, an event, whether it's citywide or neighborhood event, bookmobile@lollibrary.org will get to me and we'll, we'll take care of it. And Gwen said, just a short story, I mean, it's great, we have regulars, you know, people who look forward to seeing us at the senior center. We know what kind of books they want. They come and see us. And we were at the Bailey School, Back to School, that was on the list and, you know, we were making library cards for, we made like 30 cards for kids and one, the little sister, I made a card for a four-year-old, you know, I made her first card and it's like, it was just, she walked away with a book and a smile, you know? So, we appreciate the support all of you have given us and look forward to seeing you around the city. Thanks.
And Bridget, before you go, you now have a working elevator in the library?
We do have a working elevator, yes. It's been up for like two-plus weeks, so I'm pretty excited about it and so. I just want to make sure no city counselors have any questions. We'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor Robinson, Counselor Noon.
Thank you. I don't have really any question. I'd just like to say thank you. I think some of the key points from the presentation, I remember the first cycle that I was on, it was a big push from all my colleagues. Everyone agreed it was a great idea and I think that's very impressive to see, pretty much to go from concept to implementation. And as the gentleman spoke, it was brand-new. It's not something that the library had done before and to see you served 8,100 residents in the first pretty much inaugural season of this, that's great. I think that's 8,100 people that got to see the benefit of something that was brought up in a basic concept and now it's really full-scale out in the community and thank you. I also love the fact how you expressed the community's helping to shape the collection and so I couldn't be happier. Thank you and your team very much.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A while back when we proposed the idea of a bookmobile, we know, we know that you're going to be well-received by the community. At first was a little, you know, in terms of funding and all that, but, you know, I'm glad that you're going out to the community where they at and by doing so, you actually draw them back to the library and that's how you do it. And while, I'm very happy that you do that. I think your report, you indicated that you receive over 500 questions and you answer through, throughout the community and answers. What was some of those questions that people ask you?
A lot of times it's like books or what they can get. I don't know, what are their questions? We answer a lot of questions at the library too, so I mean, we provide phone numbers, we access services. We'll help people put library books on their phones because we have a lot of apps now that allow people to use things on their own devices. A lot of times it's, it's book requests though, based on where we go.
And I also know that you not only provide or checking out a book, you know, checking out book for people, even in the library, you do all the things, right? You do all the things. You answer a lot of the questions. So I'm sure when people ask you out there, it's not just a question about, you know, how do I get library card or how do I check, you know, checkbook out and stuff, but it's all the, all the questions that not even relate to the library function. Is that true?
We do a lot on services in the community and probably the, the section of questions we answer the most are related to technology. How to use technology, how to advocate for themselves with technology. During COVID, everything went online. There's a huge gap of people that don't have the skills, so we teach a lot of people how to do that. When businesses made everything electronics, so their statements are electronic, we help people print, we help people fax, scan, everything they need to kind of do business in this world is what the library is providing. So a lot of that is, there might be questions at the bookmobile, like how do I do this? And it's like, just go to the library and there'll be somebody there to help you do that.
I also, Mr. Mayor, I also want to acknowledge and thanks the CFO in term of the, this bookmobile thing, he has, he played a big role in it as well as the funding for the library, making sure that it's sustained and making sure that they don't have to worry the five-year plan for the library. So I thank you, the CFO, for that. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team at the library. I think the library is one of the most fantastic resources in any, any city or town. It's something that almost every resident, no matter what season of life they're in, can find a good reason to go to the library and it will improve their lives, whether it's a kid who's just learning and, you know, is just a voracious reader and looking to pick things up, an adult who's trying to sharpen their skills to find a job, someone who's in retirement, who's trying to keep their mind sharp, or any, anything else. The library is there to help all our residents and you guys do a great job. We're lucky to have all of you there and I'm very excited to see where the bookmobile can go in, in season two, so thank you all.
Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments and comments of my colleagues. I want to thank the staff, the volunteers, the trustees for all the work that you do and the bookmobile is really the symbolism of bringing adventures to all the kids all across the cities and neighborhood. They don't need to go explore, withdraw, they're not to travel so far anymore now. You bring adventures to them. I just want to thank you for making it very exciting. It is the pride and adventure of our community. I just want to say the next time you have a Dewey Decimal Party, the Dewey system, right? The Dewey system, looking for books and research and so forth, let me know, I'll be there.
Okay, if you want to help us re-catalog, you can definitely come over.
Counselor Rush, ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank all the library staff and the people that make that building next door so vibrant. It's not just a granite building, it's a building that transforms adventure into the lives of many people. And now we have a bookmobile so that people that can't get up here, we go to them. That's amazing because a child that reads is a child out of trouble, very occupied with that book instead of having idle hands to get in trouble. So it's, we just don't understand to the magnitude, we never really think of it, that we may never be able to go places, but through the adventure of reading, we can go there. We can experience things through our mind and envision what somebody else has experienced. So, thank you very much for bringing that adventure. There's a lot to like about Lowell, especially when you have a beautiful library. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. The motion accepted, placed, filed by Counselor Getchey, seconded by Counselor Dakota, other affairs say I oppose, motion passes. Counselor Chow.
Mr. Mayor, since we are still under the mayor's business, I'd like to request a suspicion of the rule to ask to have Mr. Brian O'Keefe. As you know, this coming week is the Red Ribbon, which is a drug awareness week that is going on throughout the United States, throughout the entire country. Brian O'Keefe is a representative from the DEA New England. He's an outreach specialist and going around working with communities, organizations and individuals on educating and preventing drugs usage. The DEA organization will be hosting a community forum the following weekend with CMA. At this time, would you permission, Mr. Mayor and the council, I'd like to have Mr. Brian O'Keefe to come speak.
Motion by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Getchey, other affairs say I oppose, motion passes. Mr. O'Keefe, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Chow, and I, I'll be brief. I know this is a busy meeting. First of all, Red Ribbon Week is celebrated throughout the United States. It started back in 1985 when Special Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena was brutally murdered in Mexico doing his job to fight the cartels, the very same cartels that we're fighting today. They murdered him in 1985. His body was found three days later. Ronald Reagan, then President Reagan, started a Red Ribbon Awareness Week in his home state of California and that slowly morphed into every state in the country. So what we as an agency do, we want to keep Enrique Camarena's, Kiki's memory alive. So we try to educate through prevention to any school possible. We are here in the city of Lowell, as you may or not know, through Operation Engage, this is a city we selected it earlier this year. I'm thankful I get to work with, with the mayor, the city manager, the councilman, the school board, as well as the superintendent. Right now, we're planning a youth forum in, in November, but as far as this goes, our friends, Sotia, Sam Khan, a lot of our Southeast Asian community members, they are willing to host an event that we're going to have on October 26th from 9:30 to noon time. And the nice thing about that is it's also Drug Awareness, Drug Takeback Day, which is a bi-annual event that DEA hosts. I know the Lowell Police Department, I've been working with Superintendent Huedon and his staff, they're going to host one downtown and we're also going to host a similar event as, as well as host this community forum on drug prevention education. And all I want to say is drugs affect everybody. It doesn't matter what color skin you have, what religion, what your sexual orientation is, or where you come from, socioeconomic status, drugs affects everybody in a bad way. And, and the last thing I'll leave you with, I know prevention's working, not just in the city of Lowell, because the entire state of Massachusetts and nationwide, where actually our fatal overdoses for the first time since 2009, 2010 has decreased. Our, our non-fatal overdose has continued to rise, but at least we're losing less people every day. And with that, I'm extremely grateful that you're willing to give me the microphone for five minutes and I don't know if I want to see the library here because I'm pretty sure I still owe a couple of books. Hope there's a, hope there's a statute of limitations. But with that, thank you, Counselor Chow, for setting this up and, and Mayor Rock and City Manager and Councilmen and women, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, question, Counselor Yem?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So thank you so much for what you do. It's really, really important in the Asian community particularly. If I may encourage you to reach out to the temples and churches, they are also a place where all the congregations and the residents, community coming and maybe met with the monk, meet with the monk because they have some, you know, authority in, in helping people understand. Some family who has children that I know of who were affected by drugs, turn to the temple for help. So this way, they all, the monk also can work with you to help them, the youngsters as well. I appreciate your effort and the time. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Counselor Chow, I believe we have 13 temples that have signed up to assist in this venture, so we are reaching out to the temples and the other faith-based communities as well. This is not exclusive for the Southeast Asian population or community, it's for everyone in the city of Lowell, but thank you.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Mr. O'Keefe for coming in tonight, explaining this great initiative to the council and the residents of the city and more importantly, thank you for choosing Lowell for these efforts. You know, I was previously chairman of the opioid task force for 10-plus years and let me tell you something, Lowell's doing great things on this front.
Absolutely.
We took the problem head-on way back in 2014 where communities really didn't even know what was going on. And we saved a lot of lives through initiatives. We're one of the first municipalities to have knock-in in the Commonwealth. So, and that, and that momentum continues today. So, it's good to hear the number of fatal overdoses is decreasing, which means we're saving lives in our efforts. And that's what this is all about. So, thank you again and we could use all the help we can get. So, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. O'Keefe, thank you very much. Motion accepted by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Noon, other affairs say I oppose, motion passes. Section three, City Clerk, 3.1, manage of the Veterans Subcommittee, October 8th, City Council Regular Meeting, October 8th, for acceptance by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Scott, other affairs say I, passes four, not yet at the hearings yet. Section five.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, Counselor Robinson.
Mayor, please make a motion to take 5.3 out of order, please.
Motion by Counselor Robinson to take 5.3 out of order, seconded by Counselor Yem, other affairs say I oppose, motion passes. 5.3, Counselor Robinson requests City Manager, have the property department explore the installation of a volleyball court at Gage Park utilizing a modular floor system. Seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Robinson. There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor. The clerk, ahead.
Andres Lopez. Ooh, that sounded, that sounded strong and firm. Hi, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Great, sorry. So I'm Andy Lopez. I'm hearing a lot of great things for the betterment of Lowell. This is just something that I want to bring up that I think is important to my community. So just to give you a little background.
Please just the address for the record.
Oh, 35 Hampshire Street, Lowell, Mass.
So just for the councils and the solicitor, now I just heard him. When someone calls the clerk's office nowadays to give, to speak on something, the clerk asks for the address. If it's not a Lowell address, then it's not allowed to speak unless it has affiliation with a program or something like that. So anybody that comes forward has given their address. Got you.
Sorry about that. Well, I'm from 35 Hampshire Street, Lowell, Mass. Now my stuff's in public, so the kids know, now I know. So I'm going to give you a little history of me and then I'll tell you why, the reason why I'm here. So I've been living Lowell for about 35 years. I went to all the different schools. You know, I became an educator, so I've been teaching for about 12 years. Six years at the Robinson, I've been living in Centerville for about 12 years, bought a house, so I'm in, I'm in that midst. And I, I say this because I know my, my community and I know my kids and I know everyone that's in there, right? They know my address. I don't even think I had to say it. They want to see my face, they know where Mr. Lopez is, it lives and resides and they say hi. And so, I'm coming here because I speak about expectations to my kids. You know, we all talk about preventing and, you know, the literacy to drug, you know, administration, which is in my community. And I'm talking about, more about increasing the expectations of our community. So, it sounds simple, but it's important to my community, my Latinos, my Centerville, that community. And so, I, I go there and we hosted a sort of event just to get the kids back, you know, end of summer and then to beginning of summer, which I had a lot of councilmen come, and we had 100 youth there, right? They just were clean, they were representative, they were fun, it was, it felt like a youth group that cared about their community. And so I'm here because I know Rita Mercier said, right, there's a lot to like about Lowell, but I think there's a lot to love about Lowell and there's a lot, lot to love about my community, Centerville, that park. And so I'm asking this little thing, it's small for me, but it's big for my community. It's, it's sort of like a volleyball thing, right? You think it's silly, it's small, but it's not. Not when you know the kids that want to play that don't have the resources to pay, to play. They just don't. It's just $3,000 to go in, you just don't have the money, right? But they want somebody to play and so I look at what we have now, it's a sand dust, right? And no one plays in sand anywhere here in Lowell, Drakeet, right? Everyone plays in a firm surface or in a locking system and right now it's being, the tennis court's being occupied, right, by it. Now the police call because they don't want people in the tennis court because they're playing volleyball on the tennis court. And so you see this sort of come, issues with the community when it can be easily solved by changing it, right? And I think it matters. It matters to have something like this important because now you avoid that, right? Now you have something of value. And I think we can do it because Lawrence has it. Lawrence has the same system and they're involved, their community cares, and if their community cares, in my experience working with youth, they will love their community, they will value their community. It's different when they care. And this is just a step to sort of continue that care that they care about Centerville and the perception of what they view that community. And so I know it's small and it's minor, but I, I hope that you'd consider just investing in this little bit because I think it's now about expectation. I think we love Lowell, but we got to increase the expectation, right? And this is important, I think, to me and my community. That's it. Questions?
All set. Thank you very much. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you very much and, and thank you to the speaker for bringing this forward. Again, perfect example of, of somebody with the ear to the street, working in the community, with the community. And, and this request, I know I filed the motion a while ago to consider looking at getting rid of the sand surface and creating a more solid surface. I don't play volleyball myself. We see it on TV in California and everyone's running around in sand. It seems like here in Lowell, from Pyleen Park, Clemente Park, hard surface. It's been something that a lot of people have been requesting and, and this is kind of a thinking out-the-box idea. He found a modular system that interlocks that you would place over the sandy surface if we didn't want to do a permit swap-over that would allow the community to utilize the space that they requested. And, and it's true, Mr. Lopez brought up valid. Mr. Lopez brought up valid point. We've had some contentious situations up in that area, as of late especially, because due to the demand for the hard surface, people are bringing and setting up their own volleyball courts in the tennis courts, because they want that same surface. So I mean, I think this gives us a great option to look at, and I appreciate the speaker for bringing this forward, and I can, I hope my colleagues can support this, and administration can take a hard look at this. Thank you.
Councilor Getche?
Thank you, Mayor Rook. As we look at our outdoor space, it has to become a work and document. I know our generation was baseball and football, and then when soccer came in, our generation, like, was set back. But as you start looking, I get to see it, when kids try out for volleyball at the school I actually work at. 130 kids tried out for volleyball. 130. And a lot of them had probably never played the game before, and the advantage obviously goes to the kids that have the money to pay for AAU or some other sport. But I think as you look through the city, you look at Palin Plaza, you see it's always filled to the brim with volleyball. And now we talked about pickleball. If you would've said pickleball 20 years ago, I think we all would've choked, you know? But as you look through, as we evolve, and we see in the city, as we see open space, and what are the uses, I think the speaker said it best, instead of being in an open space where kids just congregate, why not give them the net to play? And I think this is an excellent motion, and I hope it goes through, because I think that there'll probably be 140 kids, but you know, that's the disturbing pieces, we can't get them all on some team somewhere. But thank you.
Volleyball's the best in the state, Councilor.
And that's the point, is, you know, it's a growing sport.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your time.
At 7 o'clock, we had the general public hearings of 4.1 in ordinance to amend the existence of family zone, 534 to 556 Chesapeake Street. Before we open it up, I just want to take 6.2 out of order.
Yes. Yes, so moved.
By Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Noon. Communication Planning Board Recommendation Zoning Code Amendment from Regional Retail to Suburban Multifamily, sorry about that, at 534 and 556 Chesapeake Street. The motion to accept that and place on file by Councilor Yum, seconded by Councilor Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Back to the public hearing, to the same issue before us on the planning board. All's, we'll start with the, all's in favor? In favor? In favor? Are you in favor or not? No? Let me talk about... Yes, it is. Chesapeake Street, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So we're back on to the 4.1, is that correct? Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Before I begin, could I pass out some information for the members of the council? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, if you just want to put that right through, it's okay with me. If you wanted to just... You want to take questions first, by any of you? Oh, in favor. I'd sit down, I'd very happily sit right down. Thank you very much, good evening. For the record, Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent John Maria, who's here this evening with his wife. He is the president of Lowell Central Electric Company. It's a Lowell company, started in the late 1950s. I think many of us have dealt with Lowell Central, and know Mr. Maria and his family. A great company, like I said, currently employ about 50 people, all from the greater Lowell area, many from the city of Lowell itself. And they own 534, 556 Chelmsford Street, which currently is a vacant piece of land of approximately 83,000 square feet. We are requesting the city council to extend the suburban multifamily district, which is adjacent to this property, to this property, which is currently zoned regional retail. And there's small maps that have passed out this evening, kind of show what that's all about. This would allow the potential development of this site into 81 housing units housed in three buildings. This would be brand-new housing in the city of Lowell. Last week, the planning board, that we appeared before the planning board, and they unanimously recommended approval of the zoning change. So that's how we're here this evening. Just a little bit of the history on this piece of property. In October of 2022, the city council voted after an RFP process to sell the property to Mr. Maria. There are three lots that the city owned, it was a very contested, complicated land-taking, it was in the land court for many years. When it came out, the city put out an RFP, and Mr. Maria responded to the RFP. The city, the most advantageous classification in the RFP was for housing. And in dealing with the city, that's the proposal we came up with for multiple, multi-housing there. And the, Mr. Maria, in the spring, we closed with the city, and Mr. Maria paid $480,000 for that piece of property. After we closed, we were contacted by Lowell Housing Authority. Lowell Housing Authority owns a property adjacent to this property and to the rear of the property, off of Chelmsford Street. Adjacent to this property, the housing authority has units. In the rear, there are no units, they use it for storage, mostly because it's basically landlocked, there's no way to get there. So in talking with the housing authority, after we got the property, it was clear that they needed some help for access to the rear, for potential future development. So we have agreed to give the housing authority an access easement to go through our driveway, which I think you can see on that as well, to the back, in case they ever want to develop that. And the executive director, Mr. Cha, has a letter of strong support. I think the councils have that letter in their packet. There also is a, which I've handed out this evening, a memo from the, from DPD dated September 18th, updated October 7th, which shows their strong support for this project. And if I may just highlight a couple of lines in here, in this September 18th memo, in number two, the board should note all eight parcels are currently undeveloped. Number three, they say that the rezoning from IRR to SMF would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. They talk about, the next page, the Lowell Forward Plan, and how this would add 81 much-needed units of housing. And then on note number five, where it says, "The alternative scenario, large-scale commercial development would likely be more intensive than additional housing." And engineering comments is no comments, and no one else from the city objected. There also is, in your packet I handed out this evening, an email from Ali Kada, who is a directive of economic development here in the city, and she talks about that this would be a good use of this property. So it seems to me like this has potential to help out the city. Obviously, it's generating no tax revenue at this point, so tax revenue for 81 brand-new housing units would be substantial. If, it would also add 81 units to the city's housing stock, which clearly the city needs, and it would help out the Lowell Housing Authority for potential future development. I think it'd be a very exciting development, a new development. If the city council approves this extension of the zoning this evening, this is just the beginning of our process. We then go back to the planning board for a site plan review and a special permit, and also go to the zoning board of appeals for variance. So happy to answer any questions you may have. We hope that the council will join with the planning board in supporting this zoning change, and thank you for your time. You guys finish the public hearing first, before we go to the questions from the council. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? The portion of the hearing is closed. Any opposition? 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 That portion of the meeting is closed. Councilor Dakota first, then Councilor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would think it was probably six weeks ago Attorney Cox got in touch with me and told me about the plans for this space. I, for one, was ecstatic, because for the last 10, 15 years, I've been looking at a dumping site, as you come to the lights at Plain Street, and from mattresses to whatever. So this is a welcomed, a welcome project. Did speak with some of the residents over there, they were all for it. I'm also glad to see Attorney Cox, that you worked with the Lowell Housing Authority with that egress, that will help tremendously. But all in all, as we always do in the Highlands, we never say no. So thank you very much.
You got it. Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a zoning district expert. I don't know much about an SMF, suburban multifamily, but I know that there's such a thing called the planning board, and I rely on their expertise. And they did, we did send it to the zoning, planning board, and the planning board said the amendment meets the goals and objectives, maintains the intent of the zoning in the surrounding neighborhood, and is a logical extension of the SMF, and the board unanimously supported it by a positive recommendation, so I would move approval.
Councilor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cox, thank you so much, and Maria, thank you, sir. It's a wonderful addition, what the city needed. I just have a quick question about 81 units. Are they affordable housing unit, or are they just market-rate units?
Counselor, I don't know that, I would assume that's where it's going to end up. I could not make that promise this evening, but certainly we would assume, clearly Mr. Maria, as a developer, would like to, you know, to make sure his units are full, and is profitable, clearly. But we would assume that it would end up affordable. We're not looking for any handouts from the state for affordable housing or anything like that, at this point, and I don't think we will. But I could not say at this point for sure.
Thank you so much, and for me, I have no objection in approving and supporting this project. As my colleague stated, it was an empty lot for many, many years, and a lot of illegal dumping on that place. I know that place really well. Thank you.
Councilor Belanger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Attorney Cox for coming in tonight with such a tremendous proposal, it really is. Great need for it in the neighborhood. We have positive comments all around the place from the planning board, his positive remarks, as well as the staff at Planning and Development. All my records and research indicate there is no opposition to speak of whatsoever. The housing authority will have a leg up on the parcel they own as well, if they decide to develop their land as well. And as far as commercial, I understand the zoning now, but that's a very difficult intersection there, the Plain Street and Chelmsford Street, it queues up, making it very difficult for commercial use. So what's the best alternative? Housing. And at that, at the same time, it builds up the tax base as well for the homeowners who need relief, gets 81 units of housing on the tax rolls, increase the base. So I intend on supporting this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilor Scott? All set. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you to Attorney Cox. And see, this is, I think, another example of, you know, we get a lot of times from the public, you hear people say, you know, "Development, development, development." I think this is another example of the right type of development happen. One of the things that stands out to me, thank you very much for this packet, I really take high regard to Ms. Kada's input on economic development. I think she's doing a lot of things very well. And to see, while it's true that the properties would no longer be zoned commercial, they're underdeveloped, and have not been generating as much tax revenue for the city as if they were residential developments on those parcels. In addition, the residential use is already developed on adjacent parcels, so it's not out of step with the uses or building types surrounding it. It's just another example of finding the right type of project that makes sense for the community that they're trying to put it in, so thank you, and I'll be supporting this.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Attorney Cox, for the presentation. You know, this request, rezoning, is not unreasonable, particularly, it's not only that it's going to add housing stock to what lack in the city, but also put this vacant lot into taxes, taxable for the city going forward. In addition, as well, that, you know, I appreciated Attorney Cox and his client for working with Altea Butter, particularly with the Lowell Housing Authority, for allowing them to ease them. That is another thing that, you know, developers usually don't work together with a lot of people. In this case, they do, and for the good for the city, so I thank you.
Councilor Getche?
Thank you, Mayor Rook. I grew up in this area, I delivered papers actually in this area, and it's nice to see the Martels still own that home on Quimby Ave. The Loonies were good tippers in 556 Chelmsford Street. When I look at this area, I think it's a great proposal, I think it's good for the area. I wish it was there when I was a kid in the paper, actually, we still could deliver a newspaper, because I would've made a lot of money in a short, square area. The only thing that I see as a challenge again is that inland street going across towards Chelmsford Street, and hopefully they can put that light back in, so that there's a crosswalk going to the housing and across that area again, that we've brought up multiple times at the council, and we've asked that we look at that light again, because it's going up to the Washington School. So hopefully this project builds up, and it can bring that light back, so people can have a safe travel across Chelmsford Street, because there really is no crosswalk from Chelmsford to Plain all the way to Lowell. So hopefully we can get that all back together. But it looks like a great project, and bringing more people into the area is always good for that area, so I thank you for investing in this area.
Attorney Cox, you had this made council's talk to you, you're city manager. Councilor Janess, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, I promise.
Those are a little different, Mr. Mayor. Everybody's happy with you tonight.
I think this is a good use of this land, I think the zoning change makes sense, I'm happy to support this, and, you know, do what we can to support the development of more housing within the city, particularly within this area. The one thing I'll say is that, looking at it on Google Maps and the satellite picture, there does seem to be quite a few bit of trees on the property as it exists now, and obviously that will undergo some significant changes as this project moves forward. But I would ask that we just keep that in mind and try to replicate as much of the tree coverage as possible, so we can continue to mitigate the heat island effects that are prevalent in the city, and try to not make the situation any worse. But I think that overall, this project is the way we need to go, and I'll happily support this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And to your point, clearly, as we go through the process with especially the planning board, I know there are plans to try to, you know, put some trees back in there and create green space as well as parking. There's going to be parking underneath the building, but there'll be surface parking as well, and we'll try to do, you know, whatever we can, whatever's necessary to try to get some of that, those trees back in there. Thank you. Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on your prior comments, I'll make it short. It's a great example of local business, local developers, see what's needed in our community, and step up and develop the housing needs that is in high demand in our community. So great job to developer, local developer, local business, and Mr. John Cox. I too would support this.
Motion to accept by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Noon. Roll call, Councilor Clerk?
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Dakota?
Yes.
Councilor Getche?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rook?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yum?
Yes.
Councilor Belanger?
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you. Good luck going forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion to take item 6.3 out of order? I know Mr. Belay is here.
By Councilor Janess, seconded by Councilor Mercier, take 6.3 out of order. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes, 6.3. A communication, the appointment of Paul Belay to the Conservation Commission. The motion to accept is placed on file by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Yum. Roll call, Councilor Clerk?
Roll call, the others.
Roll call, even better, all right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
The motion to accept is placed on file by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Yem. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call, clerk. Even better, all right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Belay is here.
Say if you would.
Well, good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Manager, and all your councilors, for giving me the opportunity to serve the city. I know I have big shoes to fill. Louisa Vannum is a wonderful person. I had the opportunity to serve with her on the City of Lowell Flood Task Force after the floods in 2006 and 2007. I spoke to Mayor Rourke about the possibility of finding someplace in Pawtucketville to put a plaque or a stone to honor Louisa and her family, who've contributed so much to the City of Lowell. But I must say that because I have such big shoes to fill, I am going to do my due diligence for the applicants, the residents, and for the City of Lowell. And I thank you so much, Mr. Manager, and all of you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you. And I would just like to commend the manager for this choice. I don't think there's anyone that loves this city more than Paul Belay and tries to give back more to it. So I just think you're going to do an incredible job, and I'm so happy with the appointment. Thank you.
Councilor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo the comments of Councilor Scott. Mr. Manager, outstanding selection. I remember when I was in the council, we had a bad flood situation in Pawtucketville, in particular, and how active Paul Belay was to those families in that neighborhood spoke volumes. So he's certainly qualified, excellent choice, and I commend you and congratulate Paul. Thank you for serving the city. Thank you very much.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo those sentiments, my colleagues, and just say thank you to the manager for selecting Mr. Belay, and thank you for Mr. Belay for being willing to step up here. Your knowledge, living in the flood plain as you do, is going to come in extremely valuable on this commission, and I think you have a lot to offer to the commission, and I thank you for being willing to step up and do this work. Appreciate it.
Councilor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just want to thank Janet for getting him out of the house.
Yeah, that was what I was going to say. That was what.
Paul, I just want to thank you again. You know, how many boards is he on? Four? Three, four, five?
What's that?
I don't know. How many boards are you on now?
This will be my fourth board, yes.
God bless you. Thank you again, and there is no better person for the job. Thanks, Paul.
Councilor Mercia.
Yeah, that was the same quote I was going to say. Thanks, Janet.
All right. All set. It's been approved. Mr. Belay, thank you very much for stepping up and serving this very important role, and good luck to you going forward.
Thank you very much, and I'm surprised I didn't hear from my buddy over here, Mr. Dakota. But I'm grateful.
I was holding my tongue, Paul.
All right. Sounds good. Moving back to the motion list, here we go. 5.1, Councilor Dakota. Request city manager to provide an update on the recent repairs to Lowell Memorial Auditorium and a projected five-year capital budget plan. Seconded by Councilor Mercia. Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Mr. City Manager, I know we've done some exterior work in the past year or two. Maybe you can expound upon that for the edification of this council and viewing public. And then I'd like to, for you to work with the MLA trustees on a five-year plan. I mean, obviously, you know that the national gloves are coming here in a couple of years. I know the interior of the building hasn't been painted for 30 or 40 years. So maybe working with them and prioritizing their needs over there and still kind of staying within a reasonable number, I think, is something that is worthy of looking at a little bit further.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5.2. Councilor Yem, request city manager and his team look at an alternative site to relocate the Lowell Transitional Living Center out of its current location so that more economic vitality can flourish downtown. Seconded by Councilor Scott and Councilor Yem.
Thank you.
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Brandon Wright.
Thank you, everybody. Brandon Wright, better known as Ozo 201 Middlesex Street, the Lowell Transitional Living Center. I represent anyone affected by homelessness, meaning everybody. This motion insinuates that economic vitality cannot flourish downtown with our presence, but I happen to believe it can't without us, excuse me. We are valuable members of this community and deserve to be treated as such. They say the saddest thing in life is wasted talent, and this is commonplace on the streets of Lowell and at LTLC. The gentrification playbook instructs politicians such as the vice mayor to attempt to systematically break us down by defunding our services and chasing us out of our own neighborhoods. They don't even hide the fact that it's for money. If my professional and lived experience is any indication, returns are amazing when you invest in the people. Punishment over opportunity policy is designated, oh, excuse me, designed to further oppress a group already at a distinct disadvantage, and we won't stand for it. A true hero and one of Lowell's foremost freedom fighters, the founder of Coalition for a Better Acre, Charlie Garjulo, must be cringing at the thought of history repeating itself. And ironically enough, at the hands of the vice mayor, who represents District 7, which includes the acre. To quote manager Tom Golden, "Without a doubt, the overarching issue of homelessness cannot be solved by any single legislative action, but rather through a coordinated partnership of all stakeholders, including those in government, the nonprofit sector, the business community, and residents, as well as the advocates for those experiencing homelessness. If this much zeal to help us was demonstrated, as it has been for the near-million-dollar Link Project, we'd be having a much different conversation." On the flip side, LTLC's annual fundraiser, Steps to Homewalk, recently accomplished its goal of raising $50,000. Big difference. Anyone in a position to do so should be tirelessly advocating on our behalf and crafting policy designed to lower barriers to individualized treatment and recovery, which would ultimately serve to benefit our community at large. Types of initiatives that could be funded would be across-the-board raises for each and every employee that works for Lowell Transitional Living Center, the Pesta ratification, security, also in the arts. With world-famous artist and managing director Isaiah Stevens at the helm, the possibilities are endless. We have a beautiful new mural going up, Laura Q.'s Brandon's Room, which is, it's an art recovery room in its beginning stages, and Ruby's Fabric Arts Group have been discussed. These are all potential options, and plus more. Through sports, Shane Conley, who happens to be Mickey Ward's nephew, has discussed pursuing grants in the interest of procuring boxing equipment and beginning activities around our shared love and respect for the lessons learned through the sport.
Mr. Wright, almost done?
Yeah, maybe 30 seconds or so. Thank you. Also, career development. As shown to be a possibility through ICC, more onsite services and programming would yield more positive outcomes in lieu of get-well jobs and the welfare pipeline currently in place. Which of the following is most applicable to us? A, underserved, meaning a group of people or community that does not have access to the resources or services that they need, or B, undeserved, meaning unworthy of something? Here's a clue: we deserve better. Thank you.
Hold the applause. Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to Mr. Manager, this motion is a plea and a request from business owners in the area. It's a plea and request from parents of children attending Lowell Community Charter School, which recently unveiled a plan to build a performing arts center, athletic and a community center next to the LTLC. Also, from the parents of children attending STEM Academy. And lastly, some visitor that I have spoken with. So these are the requests from them, who do not want to register to speak, but ask me if I could speak on their behalf. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wonder if, Mr. Manager, you might be able to just speak on your, this motion is just coming up now, but I know you've been working closely with LTLC. So it strikes me as us telling where a private organization to go as a public body may not be in the best interest of the body. I understand there are challenges down there. I understand the situation that is being faced by the local businesses, that is being faced by the school, is being faced by the residents down there. But I can't recall another time that this board sat here and told any organization in the city that they need to move. I think that, I know that you and your team have been working with the organization. I have no idea if them moving is even something on their radar. I have no idea if this is a discussion that has been had with the organization, but I wonder if you could fill us in.
I'll say a couple of words first, Mr. Manager. You know, there have been multiple motions filed on this, and including, up until including the shelter. You know, going back to Councilor Drinkwater and myself, when we served last term, we asked to look at locations out in Tuxbury and other areas. Councilors Getchea, Robinson filed multiple motions about getting communities together to look at this as well, to see what other help can happen. And, you know, and to give you a little bit of background, there have been other cities and towns around Lowell that drop off their homeless or people they don't want to deal with under Dakota Darkness at 11:30 night at midnight, three, four, five people at a time, right? Because they do it because they can. You know, we ain't picking up, our people at the South Carmen, we're not driving them to Tinsborough, not driving them to Tuxbury or Lawrence, right? Just to kind of say that, you know, we're throwing them out or try, I don't think is the right term to use. The place is a dump. And, you know, inside and outside, you know, the people deserve, have to utilize those services. They need somewhere better, right? They deserve somewhere better. You know, and to Mr. Wright, you know, when you come up here and speak, and you do it all the time, I understand it, and I understand your passion for the subject, but you have to get your facts right when you do speak. You know, again, we have just sort of millions, millions of dollars. You said $50,000, okay? All right. Well, I'm addressing you the way you just said, okay? But again, just please have, please have the correct information when you come up here and speak, okay? Councilor Janess, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the issues faced. I don't think those problems are going to change. If the shelter's on Middlesex Street or the shelter's on Varnamav, you're still going to get people coming and dropping people off. Doesn't matter where it is. I do agree that the folks utilizing the shelter services do deserve a clean, hospitable place to live, and that enters into all this discussion. Thank you.
Councilor Getchea.
Has the building inspector or any of the inspectional services been down there and written any violations for it not being cleanly? Through you to the manager, Mr. Mayor, or the assistant city manager?
City manager?
Because that's brought up often.
We could, I could get you those reports. I don't have them at my fingertips.
Okay. My question is, because you hear it often from speakers, is it something that they have been fined on and said brought up the code? If you could bring that back to us, because we hear that often, that there's bedbugs, there's all this, there's that down there, but I don't know. Have we been down there? And do we do a monthly inspection? What's the inspection?
City manager?
We have been down there. We wouldn't typically find, because, quite frankly, LTLC, when something comes up, they would tend to act as quickly as possible to rectify the problem. It is a challenging issue. To get back to what Councilor Janess was talking about, I have had multiple discussions with LTLC, CTI, and Lowell Community Health Center, as I've referred to at this meeting on multiple occasions, in having a discussion of what we can do differently. I'm anticipating something, once again, this is only from last week, I'm anticipating something in the next couple of weeks, what I would refer to as a white paper, to see if all three organizations can work together to move in a different direction. To Councilor Janess's point, is it moving in a different location? Possibly. Is it moving down the street, across the city? Once again, possibly. Some of the councilors have been looking for other cities and towns to help, to participate. Once again, I don't want to reiterate the obvious that many here knows, that we all know about, but we are the only municipality that is opening a shelter for women. That's happening. That's happening here in the City of Lowell because this council has pushed to make that happen. So some of the discussions that were brought forward, this isn't the city telling anybody. This is the city working with our partners to make sure we can provide a better service. And I think we have been doing that, and I think it's about working together. Quite frankly, it's not the city's, we don't have that responsibility. This money comes in from state, federal government. And this city council made the decisions through ARPA and through other monies to continue to double down. So we'll continue to work appropriately together. I do hope to have the, what I'm referring to as a white paper, hopefully within the coming weeks. As I've stated, I'm working with other partners on this, so the time is not exactly my own. But I do know that they're committed to doing this. And Councilor Janess, just to be clear, is it across the street, down the street, across the city? I'm unsure of that right now because we're waiting, but with the meetings that I've had, with what I've referred to last week, just as the big three, everybody is working together to try to get this accomplished, where people could be in a better situation, as I've mentioned before, something similar to a father bills down in Quincy, where everything is all in one section, whether it be any type of assistance, for job assistance, getting back on your feet, mental health, substance abuse, et cetera. These are places that I've witnessed myself, and I think it's worthy of a continued discussion for us to go in a positive direction.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I understand the reason behind looking at relocation effort, and I mean, whether or not that's realistic, again, we don't know. We've been in constant communications and discussions with all kinds of partners. One of the things I did bring forward a while ago, and I think it's well worth taking another look at, and again, this isn't a city-owned property. I know they say any organization that services this population, it's nearly impossible to pretty much eradicate bedbugs or, it's some of the things that come along with sometimes a transient population. I think some of the things that other communities have done, not necessarily locally, and I would push again, maybe a conversation with LTLC, is a training regimen. Until, if they're not going to be able to relocate currently, why aren't we trying to incentivize a training program that would give the residents of LTLC the ability to learn a skill set and earn a couple of dollars while mitigating some of these pest controls, rodents, bedbugs, whatever is plaguing this area? I mean, I think it's worth looking at and having that conversation again with LTLC and see if it's something that they're willing to do. I know other shelters, they provide a service with their residents where mattresses get zipped with a protective covering, they have commercial-grade washing machines that get done pretty much daily to help mitigate, again, any pests and problems. And again, I know it's completely in the purview of LTLC, but until something pans out that the big three, the administration, LTLC, and everybody is pulling in the same direction, I think we're going to have to start really trying to encourage at least LTLC to do as best as they can. And as you have said yourself, Mr. Manager, many times, I know my colleagues feel the same, we're willing to step up and assist LTLC to do better with what they need to do. And I think we've had those conversations many times in the past, whether it's looking to encourage them and try to incentivize them to increase staffing or whatever it may be. But I think those conversations need to happen simultaneously. Thank you.
Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I think of that area, I think of all the buildings that are going up, the Judicial Center, progress is happening there. And having said that, they look around and see an older building, and they see people that desperately need a place to stay, like hanging around. But we forget to realize one very important thing. Number one, we don't own that building. The city has no, we have no divs on that building. It's privately owned, and it is a place that was there long before all these buildings around it shot up. So although we might want them in a bigger, better place, that's where they have started, and that's where we can't bother them, really. We really shouldn't. They've been there all these years, long before anybody else. So although progress is happening, people that are homeless, they don't have the progress, and they belong where they are. Thank you.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, everyone here, and I'm sure everyone at home too... So, you know, everyone here, and I'm sure everyone at home too, heard, they express concerned, you know, you talk about charter school, they express concern of the parent of that charter school, the teachers, and the business in that area. I share that. I too express, have expressed concern. Many time already, the manager said and crossed from us last council meeting around the issues of working with the big three. I totally agree. You know, the LTLC is, is an organization, nonprofit, and they are run by small, and we are not going to tell them what to do. But the manager said many time already, that he's working with the big three. And those, the big threes are the LTLC, one of those big three, the Lowell Community Health Center, and CTI, in addressing this in a comprehensive way, or more, more like a wraparound kind of service. And he'll mention Father Bill. That is a kind of wraparound kind of service. If you run, if you have a program and run well, you know, you can put them anywhere, you wouldn't have people out there on the street, you know, raise concern for parent, teachers, and business. I don't know how we should phrase these motions, but if it was me, I would urge the manager to continue that conversation and report back to the council progress around working with the big three, and not only the big three, but also the governor office as well, Lieutenant Governor, I know you have had a conversation with her. Again, this issue's not going to go away, it's not going to take one body to solve it, it's take all of us, all organizations and the city, to address it. And it can be done. I'm, I am hopeful. So if it's me, I would say, I'll leave it to the manager to continue that dialogue and report back to the council, if, what if any progress? Thank you.
I think it'd be great if we laid off the homeless motions for a while, let the manager take it from there. Councilor Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this is a motion that has no easy solution, it's been brought up, Mr. Mayor, as you said, several times over the last decade or two. But I truly believe that this location is not the best to serve this population. The building itself is old, it's antiquated, and its days are numbered. It has no grounds to speak of, besides curbing, which where several loitering takes place, both in the morning hours and evening hours, to enter the facility, and that's all these people have. Okay, so this, this is insufficient as far as serving the population in itself. But as to the location of this, you know, it comes down to, do we want to fix things down there, or do we not? How many testimonies do we need to hear from businesses and residents? It's every, it becoming every meeting thing, that's all I'm hearing from constituents, what else are you talking about besides homelessness? So it's about time we come up with some concrete solutions, and believe me, for every person that comes up to the podium saying they've been adversely affected by this location of, of the shelter, there are many more who don't want to come down and speak, that I've spoken to in the last couple of weeks, that unfortunately I have to be their voice, it's not an easy stance to make, but it's one that's necessary. So, Mr. Manager, I'd like you to work diligently with the big three, we need to come up with a solution. I believe it needs to move. I really do, for what we got going on down there.
All the favors say a, opposed motion passes 5.4, Council Robinson, request city manager have the property department explore expanding on working with Refuge Art School and other interested stakeholders to increase inventory of art receptacles, seconded by Councilor Noon, Council Robinson.
Thank you. I think the pilot rollout that we tried a little while ago with Refuge was a smash success. I think we all saw that when they got rolled out. As we're well aware, we're always in need of additional trash receptacles in strategic locations, and I think with the cold weather coming, it's a perfect time to reach out to Refuge, as well as any other art groups in the city that might be willing to do, I don't know, two, three, four, five barrels apiece, and, and maybe we have another rollout for the spring. Thank you.
All the favors say a, opposed motion passes 5.5, Council Robinson, request city manager have the HR director explore creating comprehensive department-specific training manuals for all employees, seconded by Councilor Noon, Council Robinson.
Thank you. This motion comes about because for the past three years, we've all sat here, and, and we've seen, training is something that we do sporadically in, in all areas, many areas, and I think this kind of gives a tool to the administration to kind of incentivize our employees, and, and also assist our employees to gain value. I think something along these lines could come into play when we're looking at promotional opportunities, something along these lines could come into play when we're looking at putting together special response teams, whether it's, say, a checklist of, of 10 training areas that are departmental specific. So an example could be, if I go to work in the DPW, I'm hired in there, and I'm working in the tree crew. Well, it'd be pretty reasonable, part of that training should be chainsaw safety training classes, getting certified and trained to use the buckets with hydraulics. I think this lends itself to our HR director, it lends ourselves to the DEI position, it lends ourselves to our department heads, it lends ourselves to the city administration, as well as, after we saw raises being sent out, we, we kind of took the initiative on, on ourself. To, to, we realized that we were deficient in many areas, and to be competitive with surrounding communities, we kind of took the initiative to say, okay, we realize where we are on pay scales. I think this also helps us to say, now, let's start becoming more efficient in many areas, because we know that the manager and his team is able to construct a training regimen that's departmental specific, so we know that our employees understand the full scope of the requirements of the job, as well as, it's something that our employees are going to be able to put in their resume, and, and it shows that they're well-trained, and, and it kind of raises value and stock as an employee. And so I just think that this is a great opportunity for a lot of areas to, to improve the way the services that we're providing to our residents, by our residents, and, and it's also a way to raise our employees' values. Thank you.
All the favors say a, opposed motion passes 5.6, Council Getchea, Council Scott, request city manager provide the fire department with the proper funding for materials to complete the kitchen area at the Gorham Street Fire Station, no second needed. Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So unfortunately, possibly due to a misunderstanding, I'm not quite sure how it happened, but there's no longer a kitchen at the Gorham Street Fire Station, all the way down to the studs, the room has been demolished. So the, the motion really speaks for itself at this point in time, whether it's funding, or if it's the labor that's needed, this needs to get done. I, I do believe that we need to look at the conditions across the district, at all the firehouses, and, you know, what the staff are working in, but again, this motion has to happen, unfortunately. Thank you.
Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Mr. Manager, I'm sure you know about this better than any of us at this, and I just hope that we can see if there's funding left over to properly fund multiple kitchens that need to be done in the firehouse, as, as we've all have asked through the years. And I, I agree with Council Scott, the motion speaks for itself, and I just hope that there's a funding source that could be moved over and, and get this moving. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, to the council, councilors, thank you again. Working together through our, through our last Capitol piece, we do have money available. The administration had moved forward, and the council agreed to $3 million, so we do have that money that is available, and I'm waiting on an update from Chief Keane, and to make sure that things have been getting done, as they have, as they have been. We also have the OPM, that we're waiting on their report, so there is a lot of activity, some a little extra in, in certain areas that people got excited on, but we will be putting that back together on, on Gorham Street, as well as continuing to update the firehouses. And I should have, I believe there was another motion about this prior to, which I know that the chiefs are looking at that to try to answer in the coming weeks.
Mr. Manager, you can save some money, just use the Gorham Street demo crew with the other fire departments throughout the city. All the favors say a, opposed motion passes, community officials from the city manager, seconded by-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Permission to request motion to suspend the rule, we still have a speaker, I'd like to suspend the rule to take 10.1 out of order.
Motion to take 10.1 out of order by Councilor Charles, seconded by Councilor Dakota, all the favors say a, opposed motion passes, 10.1. Petition, miscellaneous, Wester Street LLC gave daily manager Attorney John Cox request extension of traditional two-family zone to include property at 684 Wester Street, currently zoned suburban single family. The motion to refer to Law Department for a report and recommendation by Councilor Charles, seconded by Councilor Dakota, all the favors say a, opposed motion passes. Back to community officials from the city manager, motion response A, senior center parking, Council Getchea, Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for your motion response. As much as I'd like to agree with it, I totally disagree with the response. Adding four to the front of the building is not the answer. Currently, if you go by the senior center, there's a total of 42 spots on the Broadway side of the senior center, five are handicap, one of the handicap is far to the side of Walgreens, so that would never be used by anybody who goes into the senior center. One of the four remaining in front of the senior center, one is reserved by pro rehab, so that gives three spots. Of the remaining 37 spots, seven are reserved for pro rehab, six are not reserved, one is a handicap reserved for Walgreens, and the remaining 23 spots are reserved for the seniors at Walgreens, spots at Walgreens. A total of nine spots at the front door of the senior center are up for grabs for the seniors. They are not marked senior center parking at all. So there's six spots, regular spots, and three handicap, the six spots are not marked for senior center. So if anybody from pro rehab or Walgreens wants to park in these spots, they take it, leaving the seniors to go to the side of Adams Street. In front of the Old Bond, which would be the clearest path to enter the building during the winter months, there are 13 spots not designated, and while I was there, most of the parking there are walking to Market Basket for food. Not many seniors. On the Adams Street side, there are 29 spots not marked for seniors, not one handicap spot to the side door, which could very easily be ADA compliant, and make travel much easier and a path easier traveled when designated. There are also 12 spots on the LaGraine Street side of the senior center that are taken up by neighbors parking. There is no reason why we can't mark those on the Adams Street side of that building, except an owner that thinks they're still an owner, even though we're still in the middle of this whole, who owns that building after the 20-year agreement was up, says no. We need to make the Adams Street side four handicap spots, as was asked for. Councilor Rita Mercier, Councilor John Dakota, and myself have been down there every single month for meetings. That is the number one issue for the seniors right now, is being able to come in that side door with their handicap chairs, which makes, it, it absolutely is easy to make ADA compliant. A button, and it's already compliant down, and all we got to do is make a few spots. It's not as hard as what people are trying to make it believe. And you know what? At the end of the day, if we really care about these seniors, and we talk about the winter weather down there, we'd have more than six spots in front that are not designated to anybody, and three handicap spots that are not designated to anybody, while pro rehab has one designated spot directly in front of their place in a handicap, and nine others that are directly in front of theirs, and Walgreens has the other 30-something spots dedicated to them. It's not fair to our seniors. They should have access to this building, and I understand that that side door doesn't go through the main foyer, but these are handicap people that need an avenue in. I would ask you to relook at this issue and try to make this happen.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I let my colleague, Councilor Getchea, go first, because I was thinking that, I didn't agree with this either, but I wanted to hear what he had to say, and he confirmed as to what I was thinking as well. We asked for four handicap parking spots to the east side of the building, which is the Adams Street side. There's a side door there. Now, if you, if I got a report that said there are two spots there on either side of the door that we'd like to save for the meal on wheels, that they park their vehicle there, they load the meals into it, I could, I could accept that, because people need to eat, and these are the people that can't get out of their home. So there's a service that's provided there. Every time I go in the morning, they, they're filling these vehicles, I understand that. But we could have put two handicap parking spots on one side of that area, that parking spot for the, for the truck that fills up the meals on wheels, and two on the other side. I don't see the problem there, but it would be very easy for the seniors to get in. They said that the four spaces along Broadway are the clearest path to enter. That's the furthest spot away. I, I don't get it. So I do agree with Councilor Getchea, we asked for four spots on that side, I don't see why, I could, I could pick them out for you. If you want me to pick them out, I could pick them out. And if you want to leave two spots on either side for those vehicles taking the meals on wheels, fine, I, I could agree. But the four that you're giving me, that's not going to cut it. No, I don't agree with that. I appreciate the report, but I don't like the answer. Thank you.
Council Belanger?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the concerns of my colleagues are genuine, and we all know what an advocate Councilor Mercy has been throughout the decades for the elderly. That is beyond question. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, Mr. Manager, are we able to designate or restrict handicap spots in any way? I know I've tried for downtown businesses any, over the years, to maybe perhaps designate handicap at night, for the downtown, you know, nightlife and whatnot, and that was not allowable. So do you know if we could designate, or from, so the pharmacy, they're more allocated towards the senior center, is that possible?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Councilors, I can put four over there, but this is really more about the weather. We are in the process, we're going to try to build something out, the main, the great room, if you would, when people utilize that in the winter months, it becomes cold and gets cold, and it stays cold. And the main entrance was laid out on Broadway Street, sure, we should have probably have done it differently 20 years ago when we started this, but once again, we're trying to get people to use the main entrance where the kiosk is, where the check-in is, where the elevator is, where you could go to the second floor, et cetera. We did move the meals on wheels to the back of the kitchen, which, once again, is a, the point of trying to do that is to try to keep the heat in that main great room, and that's really what we're up against. So I can, we can do this, we can ask the owner, I'm sure they'll do it, but I've, my fear is, without us putting in a cupola, or, or some type of, some type of area that's going to, going to act as a deterrent for cold air coming in, we're going to go back to the same issue that we dealt with last year, and that's the main room being cold. So this isn't, this wasn't trying to, to not answer the question, but the main entrance is on the Broadway Street side, and maybe we can put something together by next year to see what we could build out, so it's not as cold in the winter months. That's really why this was done this way.
Council Belanger?
Yep.
Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilor Getchea, and Mercy, and myself on the Senior Citizens Trans Subcommittee, the handicap, handicap spots are right there, and the automatic door is right there, and if you look at it, there's nobody that parks there. It's, this isn't, to me, this isn't rocket science. Let's just get the spots there, designate them, and call it a day. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager, you know, I, I don't disagree with you in the past about the heat in the area, that's because none of those units were working for a long time, and it's not that hard to put a mini-split over that door. So just put a mini-split over the door, get the heat in there, and we take care of the, the people who now travel much more, and if we're worried about how they're traveling to that front door, shouldn't six spots be marked for senior center parking only? There's not one spot in all of those lots marked- marked for senior center parking only? There's not one spot in all of those lots marked for senior center parking only. There's not one. And that's the question, is Walgreens has the whole front taken up, and so does pro rehab or whatever it is in the front. Every spot is taken up except for nine spots in the front. Six of them non-handicap, three handicap out front. So I just think that it's not fair and equitable down there for the seniors, as it is for Walgreens and also pro rehab. I just think the parking out front does not state what this motion response stated. That's all.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Through you to the city manager. There are new construction. You're seeing it more and more frequently. I've seen a couple newer projects. I think Tavern on the Square is one of the companies that you see this in. And what you're seeing is entryways like that, where it is an issue because it's an external facing wall. There's paneling, radiant heat paneling available that can retrofit into the ceiling of that entrance area that pretty much projects heat down, and it offsets. So any cold rushes are mitigated right in that area because you have that paneling. So I mean, maybe that's something to, again, I know it's, we have a weird partnership or currently with the building owner. It's, I don't know if it's the city-owned or it's still privately-owned or wherever it lies, but that may be something worth looking into if that's a concern here. Thank you.
Motion Response B, recreational youth swimming program. Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you for the response. My only question I have is, where are the programs advertised? That's what one of the residents asked me, where are the disability classes only so they can get swimming lessons? That's all.
Mr. Fattick, Kenny?
Thank you very much. So we do all of our advertising on our website, through emails and through our Facebook page. We don't advertise specifically for disability programs, because a lot of families don't tell us when their child has autism or something like that, because they don't want to be eliminated from programs. So when they come to testing, and we test them, we see what their skill level is, and that's when we typically learn from families that the child has a special need for us to accommodate.
See, I think that's what the motion was trying to get to, is can we offer a class for disability people so that they would know that this is just for them, before, that you would know that before they even got there?
So we typically do private lessons for kids who have disabilities. So we can advertise more of that if you'd like. But just so you know, when we do that, we have one instructor for six mainstream kids, one instructor for one autism kid who's high on the spectrum. So it does change up our dynamics a lot. So we typically have about anywhere from eight to 10 kids a year who need special services, whether it's autism or wheelchair. But we don't specifically advertise it that way.
And that was really what I was getting to, is are there challenges? Why we don't do that? And you basically said because one person has to go, one lifeguard has to go with one person. Is there a way that we could offer that up to, say, like, six individuals at one time or something like that, where there's a medium number where you can get only so many lifeguards? Or would it be cost prohibitive because you have to rent places for swimming?
So the way we do it now is we plan the pool to have four classes at a time. And then when we have kids who do have a special need and need a one-on-one, we have room in the pool to add a fifth spot for that one person. So that's how we do it currently. Because of the amount of time, I mean, we have the pool this year Saturdays and Sundays for four hours each, so we're doubling our capacity for swim lessons. Last year, we had about 160 kids a week. This year, we're hoping to have 350, depending on levels and how many privates we have in adult lessons. So we're always trying to increase the number. It just, not every kid who is on the spectrum in our swim lessons needs a private, though. So that's the other problem, is that until we really sit down and talk to the family and we email the family, see what their child's individual needs is and what their attention is, we don't necessarily know if someone indicates they have autism, if the child needs a private. So it really helps us to have them come to the test and kind of evaluate their need at that point. So when we do testing, like, right now, we have about 350 spots we expect to have for swim lessons this year. We have 317 kids sign up for testing, so that way we can accommodate whatever we need to. And then if we have extra space, we can then do another day of testing the week after.
Do you think we could be more aggressive at just advertising and seeing if there is that want or need in the community, that maybe people are not trying to get into it, but, you know, maybe if the services were in-your-face offered, it would be maybe more advantageous for them to reach out to you?
Well, one of the other things we do is we partner with the Kids and Disability Sports Program, and we do their swim program, and we advertise to them as well that we do swim lessons for kids with autism as well. So I don't know, I don't know how much traffic our website gets, other than when we do advertisements and email blasts out. So I don't know if people aren't already on our website, if they'll think to look at our website. I mean, we've had a woman who came and didn't even realize that we had programs that ran, let alone that we included autism kids in our program. I don't know how much traffic our website gets. I don't know how much traffic our Facebook page gets compared to other sites. Advertising, since I've been here, has always been the tough part about this.
Thank you.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Peter. You offer swim lessons. Where is the pool?
So in the winter months, from October through April, we use a greater little tech pool, and we're using it Saturdays and Sundays this year. Last year was just Saturdays. In the summer, we use swim lessons at South Common and McPherson.
Oh, right, right, right.
We offer lessons about eight to nine months of the year.
I didn't know where you offer them in the winters.
In the winter, we go to the tech.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you.
Motion Response C, review Board of Parks policy handbook. Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody who was involved in putting this handbook together. I think it's a great guideline for how to get something rented and make sure we're there. I just have one question about, it says they permit concession stands. How do we do that? Do we, do we have keys to all the concession stands?
Manager?
Oh, Peter. So typically, the leagues that constructed the concession stands are the ones that come to the board every year and get permits for them. They permit the concession stands just like they would permit a field. So the, as far as I know, I don't believe that the Parks Department has access to all the keys for all the concession stands, but I can't speak for Shannon Cohen and Parks Department on that. But I do know that the Lowell Youth Baseball League does get permits for those every year from the Board of Parks to operate them, and they have keys to those as well.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The manager wanted to say something before I ask. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
I was going to make the suggestion that we take 8.2, something like the same thing. We want to keep on going.
Through you to the city solicitor. If there's a concession stand on city property, and it was built on city property, shouldn't the city have the keys to that, and city have ownership of those concession stands?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I certainly don't know enough about what has happened over the years. I would, to answer your question, generally, I would say yes. But I certainly, I don't fully understand the relationship between who is in and out of those concession stands.
I would like to make a motion that the city solicitor get back to us on which concession stands are actually owned by the city, and if not, why they're on city property. And, you know, because if we don't have keys, that just makes absolutely no sense. Some people built things on city property and are now not, we don't have keys to them, which doesn't make any sense to me. So I'd like to make a motion just that the city manager or city solicitor look into figuring out which ones we have keys to, which ones have been donated to the city, because they should have been donated when they were built. I remember we built a batting cage at Calery Park, and before we built it, we went through Tom Belgaud, and he said it has to get a donation to the city to put it up. So that's what we did. We just donated materials and it back. So I just want to make sure that we understand what is owned, because we put in here that they're permanent. How we permanent something out we don't have keys to? And who gets, who gets the right to use them versus who doesn't get the right to use them? So those are just...
I guess, I mean, you, Councilor Gitcher, right? You're up at Calery or Hadley.
Yeah. We did the same thing.
At Pawtucket, we had the keys, and you want to pay a DPW worker to open them up for six hours and close up at the end of the night?
Right.
That's what, you know, we got it last time.
I'll second the motion, only because I'm concerned about that. That was brought up at one of our meetings. So Councilor Dakota and myself, we're both going to second it. How's that? Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion Response D, create them. Councilor Gitcher?
I just want to extend my sincere thank you to the city council and Mayor Ruck for giving me the opportunity to speak at the Health Board multiple times, representing the city. I think that we're going in a very good place currently, and I hope that we continue to warrant your support in trying to get this done. Thank you again, Mr. Manager, for all of your support on this, and Mr. Mayor and the rest of the city council.
Motion Response E, Cambodia Town Meeting. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Assistant Directors, Giovanni Rosas and her team, was at the meeting inviting neighborhood businesses, and myself, Councilor Jam, and others was there to have discussions around some of their concern, the concern of the property owners and businesses regarding the safety improvement plans for the intersections of Middletex and Branch. I know that after the meeting, we left, and DPD and Liz Oldsmant said that they can continue to have conversation with those business community to try to find a way to mitigate those, you know, the impact on the businesses and stuff. So the conversation is ongoing. It was very productive, and they appreciated that Assistant City Managers and her team was there. Thank you.
F, Response C?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Yehm, go ahead.
I just want to have a quick comment, maybe question to regarding the plan. At the meeting, community meeting, regarding road construction sidewalk, and particularly between Branch and Middletex Street, the community came out and expressed some concern. My question to the planning department is, if we make the changes in 2025, do we have, like, a evaluation period to see if the traffic pattern worked well or not, and then make some correction down the road? And that's just my first questions. I'm not sure if someone here, just, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Councilor, unfortunately, Assistant City Manager had to go home today.
Okay. No problem. Just a question. And then number two, regarding the plan is cultural identity banners. That's, the banner was put up, and I understand that, in 2026, when all the renovation on the street and all of that done, the banner would then, will be put up. As a founding member, one of the founding members of Cambodia Town, we unveiled new banners in 2015 at an annual meeting banquet, and then a month later, we present those new banners designed. The first one, if you could, at the meeting, we presented that to the city of Lowell and asked the city to produce that, to put it, but then it's not happened. My question and my recommendation is that when time comes and we, the city ready to produce new banners, if I may ask, that the city would work with CMIA, work with Clemente Park Committees, and with the resident to come up with the design. What you see here is a design that was presented to the city back in 2015, and you and I were not on the council at the time. If you show number two, picture number two. And I also want to show, this is also the banner that we presented to the city, and I will email that to the DPD so that the, the DPD has its own file. And if I go to picture number three, I just want to recommend DPD staff work diligently to educate the resident in Cambodia Town about the new project that's coming up. So I just want to shout out and thanks Jess for working really hard with the community and the planning department to come up with all the plan and the residents aware of what's coming up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Jam, the banner that you have put on the, up there just a minute ago, that's ruined. They are making a new banners in the meeting. If you remember, that DPD Director and her team, Assistant Directors and her team indicated that because an ongoing project is going in the park and all that, they kind of delay. And if you remember the last report, we got it from them, because I did file those motions about the banner. Given that ongoing project, they're going to hold off on putting that ban, putting the ban back up.
2026.
And that's the report.
Yeah, 2026, Councilor.
Motion Response F, cybersecurity costs. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This number is certainly staggering. It's 4.25 million was the total cost that's been reported. I guess my motion was basically asking about it never happening again, which I know is not a thing that could, we could say with certainty won't happen. But I am happy to see the controls that have been put in place, changes to policies that are happening, software updates, and being part of the Commonwealth Zero Trust Initiative and training programs. I think we'll be more resilient to this. Obviously, there's a lot of things that the city could do with 4.25 million dollars. So if there's any other areas that we need going forward, then I think it's certainly an investment that's worth making. So, thank you.
Motion Response G, ribbon cuttings. Councilor Blanger, Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the timely motion response. Greatly appreciated. It's a great motion response, mainly satisfactory. The only thing, issue I would bring up is that, you know, when restaurants and businesses open up, it's indicated that it's always up to the owner of the business. Well, you know, perhaps they're the ones that need a little persuading that, you know, maybe it's best to do these things after business hours, so they have a better participation from the council. They may not understand the fact that, you know, we all work full-time, and it's a little difficult for us. So we're just trying to increase participation. That's the goal. But please advise, Mr. Manager to you, please advise DPD to make that recommendation that, you know, recommend you, if it has to happen during the day, then it has to happen. But preferably after business hours, we can have better participation. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I concur with my colleague. I think the mayor's office has been great. I think since the motion even came out, I noticed there were a few events that were scheduled a little bit later, and I think you saw participation grow up. So hopefully we can find that balance that allows different schedules to attend. Thank you.
Motion Response H, council employee evaluation tool with attachments. Councilor Yehm and Scott?
Okay. Thank you. So we met, and this was a great meeting that we held. It was really trying to push that we had more performance-based metrics in our evaluations of our employees. There were some great examples that were in here. Cambridge was one of them. But there was a proposal that was brought forward from this, and that I would make in the form of a motion, I guess, to request the city manager move forward with the Collins Center on their proposal for an evaluation tool.
Seconded by Councilor Yehm. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion Response I, prohibiting sleeping, tenting, camping, 1,000 feet of a school. Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I want to thank you for your response and the ordinance, but I, 8.1, to me, doesn't go far enough. It's a good ordinance, but it doesn't go far enough for the schools. I would ask that a line be added to Section D at the end of the first sentence, with the exception of 1,000 feet of school.
Can I get there first, Councilor, and go through the rest and get to 8.1? You want to add to 8.1?
Yeah. I just want to throw it out there first. I want to add this to it. With the exception of 1,000 feet of school, the prohibition would stand. I want to make sure that we protect the schools no matter if there's a bed or not, and I want that written in there that says, look, you know what? Within 1,000 feet of a school, there is no wiggle room here. We should not be tenting. We should not be topping or camping in those areas. So I think it's a great ordinance. I just wish that would be strong, it would have stronger language within that ordinance. Thank you.
I second that. You guys can think about that while I go through the votes, okay? Just going back to you for an answer. We have votes to the city manager, Councilor Gitcher, to bundle, seconded by Councilor Noon, to bundle 7-1, 7-2, 7-3. Votes to the city manager, vote to accept and expend $37,617 FY24 for the Edward Berman Royal Justice Assistance Grant. 7.2, allocate $102,502.50 to Open Point Sound Funds, and 7.3, transfer $2.9 million from a Special Education Stabilization Fund. Need a vote to adopt by Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Yehm. Councilor Dakota?
I do have a question concerning this Special Education Stabilization Fund to the CFO. How did this get to this point? Because I did the budget, and the money was supposed to be in the special education budget. It was not in the stabilization fund. So somebody dropped the ball at the school department.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This request is brought forward on behalf of the school committee. This stabilization fund was established by the council and the school committee. It requires a majority vote of both bodies to appropriate funds. But to your question, Councilor, the amount that was appropriated by the school committee in the 2025 school budget for special... in the 2025 school budget for special education transportation was about $5 million. So it's, it's less than what they had spent last year?
No. But what happened is they only took a portion. They took the in district, and they didn't put in the out of district specialized transportation. They screwed up.
Well, certainly you're the expert in that matter. I believe this is a supplemental.
I put the money in the budget in March, so I know the money was put there. Whoever was in control at that point didn't follow through. Now you're getting this from the school department that they needed to do the stabilization fund, which is basically, I'm not buying it. Let's put it that way.
So we'll take 7-1 and 7-2 first. Clerk roll call.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getia.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Mr. CFO, on 7-3, I mean, screw ups be, you know, what they are, the money still needs to be there to pay it, right?
Mr. Mayor, in, in my opinion, and this is a, you know, the, the school committee has jurisdiction over the school department budget, but this request is so that they can meet obligations that Mr. Pinto has communicated to me are legal obligations. So it does appear that this, this transfer is required.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk. No, it's all done. 7-1, 7-2, 7-3 were done, so the same two, Council Robinson.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
On this vote, would it be fair, I'd like to hear more from my colleague on this. Would it be fair to get more clarification at least before we take a vote on this? Because, I mean, if there's discrepancy, is, is that a reasonable ask? And I think we, we're lucky, we have someone on the council that understands exactly.
Do you vote up or down on it? I mean, the, the bills are there, they have to be paid, that's why the money's being put into the fund. So, I mean, you know, feel free to vote how you wish. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
No.
Council Getia.
No.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
No.
Council, Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
No.
Motion fails. I think they only got seven, right? Needs eight.
It says right here, roll call, six.
Just needs a simple, just needs a simple, okay.
Then say that in the vote. Orders of the city manager, 8.1 ordinance to amend chapter 222 unlawful camping on public property. Give the first reading as a motion to the planning board. But before we do that, Council Getia had a suggestion to the solicitor. Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, yeah, understood, Counselor. It, it obviously would be a very simple change, you know, to put that language in there. I just, I would point out that in the last paragraph of section D, it does specifically say that the city manager, you know, in consultation with police department and other relevant city departments, is authorized to promulgate any additional restrictions relative to time, place, and manner for camping during a period when shelter is unavailable.
I don't want them to be, have that responsibility. I want that written in without them having that responsibility. That's why I, I really would like you to put it up, if you could. If that's the will of the council, yeah, if the will of council.
So if this happens, we've got to put it off for another few weeks. Does care what you?
Yeah, I second the motion to add that language, please.
Well, the motion refers to the planning board for public hearing October 29th. So we should probably take a roll call on this ordinance, because if it passes, it goes to the public hearing. If not, it goes back to the manager's office, correct?
Yeah, is there a motion to send it back to the city?
No, there's a motion to change the ordinance, which we have to send it back and also have to start all over again.
Mr. Mayor, could you just clarify what's on the table for this vote, please?
Yes, your change.
Okay, thank you.
What we're doing is, we're going to take 8.1 as it is, if it fails, based upon the motion you made to change it. If it fails, then it goes back to the solicitor, to the manager's office, come back to us in a, what, two more weeks?
So, two more weeks. Why don't?
Right. Mr. Clerk, should we take Council's motion first or take the vote first?
I would take the council motion first. If the motion passes, then, then it gets back up to the law department, and there's no reason to refer it at this point. You have to wait for it to come back to the law office.
All right, so you wanted to state the change in the ordinance, please?
Changes in, in, up to the law department.
So, Council Getia, what was your change that you wanted to make to it?
I would just refer to the, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Solicitor.
So was the change that there would, there is to be no camping within 1,000 feet of a school regardless if there is any shelter space available? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so for clarification, the vote is on the requested change, correct?
The vote is on Council Getia's motion, that was seconded by Council Robinson, yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, we have an opportunity for, assuming this passes, will we have an opportunity to discuss other potential changes? Or is it just gone to the law department at that point, and we're going to wait for it to come back and talk about it again?
I would make all the changes you have to do, make it right now.
So first, we'll take Council Getia's motions and move along. Roll call.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getia.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is more, it's not necessarily a specific change, but we may get there. In, under the penalty for violation, section H, I was wondering if the, the solicitor could expound a little bit as to what the different, what the, what point one really says, like in plain English, what are our enforcement options without having to dig through the, the linked legislation?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, so broken down to its most basic form, it's allowing law enforcement agencies to make an arrest based off of a city ordinance. So, and that could be for a variety of different things. It depends what's in the ordinance. On this particular ordinance, it would be for, you know, violating any sort of camping, sleeping on, on public property. So when you have an ordinance like this and there's a violation, the law enforcement agencies are allowed to make an arrest. As opposed to making an arrest when someone commits a crime on the criminal side, this is the ability to do it on the civil side in a municipality.
Okay, so in, in this situation where someone is theoretically civilly arrested for violating this ordinance, what are the potential punishments that someone is facing at that point?
Usually a fine.
At this point, it would be sort of at the discretion of the judge in whatever the situation might be. There's no specific fine that's laid out in this ordinance. But again, when someone is arrested, you know, you'd go before the judge, and the ultimate outcome would be in their hands.
Doing civil commitments, Counselor, are for substance abuse, mental health.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion then that, under the penalty of a violation, the first violation should be like a written warning, and the person should be given 72 hours to remove their camp. My concern is people coming to the city who don't know about this, getting arrested, and then getting stuck in the justice system. If we can avoid that by providing a written warning the first time someone falls afoul of this, I think that's a good step.
Second. A quick question, Mr. Solicitor. So according, so like what Council Janess said, could we, could it go like a trespassing or loitering route that does carry at least a little more teeth to it? Only because if, if a fine is all what it is, right? And it's just not, it's going to be what we're doing right now, just rotating it over, right?
Right, so we already have ordinances that would address those particular issues. So are you asking to?
Do the police?
Right, those are, those are for fines.
So do they give?
Correct.
Notices of, you know, next time, you know, here's your notices, not to trespass and stay away?
If, if that's what the goal, if that's what the body wants, to have that a part of, I guess, a written warning phase to it, then we could certainly include the language.
Motion by Council Janess, seconded by Council Noon. Any comments on the motion? Roll call. Okay, Council Robinson, go ahead.
Wouldn't, so again, this ordinance is yet another tool. Wouldn't that fall into discretion of law enforcement? I mean, it, it's, because I know even through communications and conversations I've had with a lot of our, our officers that are dealing with this on a daily basis, they're not seeking to arrest on, on a first basis. And I think by doing this, it, it's not providing these tools. I think that this is really discretionary call by law enforcement. So for us to sit there and, and say, oh, well, it's mandated to, to give warnings and, and again, how's it documented that you got a warning? Like, there's a lot that we're opening the door, and, and basically, we're asking a lot from the people that are going to have to implement this policy. Co-op, the outreach teams, they're all going to be aware, made aware of this, and, and communication is huge. I, I don't think one officer out there is looking to just show up and arrest people. This is going to be a discretionary call case by case basis. So, I mean, to keep watering this down repeatedly, I don't see why we're doing this. I mean, if we're going to draft an ordinance, let's draft the ordinance and, and leave the people that are trained in this field their discretion. I mean, and maybe I'm wrong. I haven't heard from anybody in the community that they just show up and arrest, first time, first offense, first, for, for somebody trespassing. Usually it's, let's get going, this is the policy, it's time to go. And then, you know, if it, if it escalates, that's a different story. But we're kind of tying law enforcement's hand and then asking them to go out and do a job. I, I think this should be left to their discretion.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Chow.
I, I agree with the Counselor's, Council Robinson. I think once you, if you were to put this in ordinance, you're really tying the law enforcement to one specific action only. And I do agree that anyone, any professional law enforcement working in this capacity are not there to arrest the individual on the first trial. But there might be situation that individual might act up in different ways. I don't know. But if you're going to say they have to write a warning on the first one, you are limiting what the law enforcement can do. So I, I don't feel comfortable voting in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Roll call. By Council Janess, seconded by Council Noon.
Council Chow.
No.
Council Dakota.
No.
Council Getia.
No.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
No.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
No.
Mayor Rock.
No.
Council Scott.
No.
Council Yem.
No.
Council Belanger.
No.
Motion fails.
I do have one more question for the Solicitor. So if someone's arrested for driving without a license, it's a civil infraction to start off with. If it's multiple offenses, it becomes a criminal. Subsequent offenses, those become criminal. Are we talking about the same thing here?
Well, I believe what you're describing is specifically, you know, codified in the actual criminal statute.
Correct.
So if you wanted to have something like that apply here, we would have to put it into our own ordinance, otherwise it would just strictly be up to.
My question is, is stopping someone from going there, being civilly arrested, and being back there an hour later, and then doing it again, arresting again and again and again? And if there's nothing at the end of the day, what's the ordinance for in the first place?
There is nothing to stop that.
Okay, so we have one change that's made, so it means it goes back to the manager's office and the solicitor's office and.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, Council Yem.
Regarding the, the ordinance, I have a question in the section B, the definitions. The Bs, my question is on number six and number seven, Mr. Mayor, through you, through the solicitor. Who will make the call when the shelter is full? Number one, that's number six. Number seven, personal property. So do we, so how do we define a personal property? So that's kind of, somebody have to make the call, maybe the responding officer do have to make the call. So that's just the two question I have regarding the ordinance. Thank you.
Solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I'll start with the number seven, because I, I can answer that comfortably. Obviously, it's a very subjective thing. Now, there could be an instance if someone is arrested, some of the belongings or whatever is there, they may become evidence. That's sort of the normal course of action. And we sort of, in the definitions here, there could be things that are unsanitary, things that are, you know, unhealthy, whatever other issues they might pose, those would be discarded of. Anything else? It could be a laundry list of things that might be personal belongings, birth certificates. I'm sure there's a long list of different things that, you know, again, it's subjective, but someone will look at and say that that's someone's personal belongings. And then those effects would be stored, the police department, for, you know, a minimum of 30 days. At least that's the intent at this point. With number six, the period when shelter is unavailable, I don't know that I'm the best person to speak, to speak to that. I don't know if, you know, Ms. Golden or anyone who's involved with the co-op, the homeless, you know, coordinator there, the ones that track that sort of information in terms of what's available, because I know it varies and changes on a daily basis.
Anything else? Council Yem?
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. Council Robinson.
Two things real quick. So, I mean, with, with, to be uniformed, a lot of instances like that, wouldn't it be pretty much, who would be declaring that? Would be the manager or the designee? And whoever that way, whoever the manager designates to handle the, because, you know, the, the people that are actually monitoring this on a minute-by-minute basis, then I think, you know, that gives flexibility to the administration to assign who they think would be best to handle that, for one. For two, the codification process that you talked about, what, I mean, is that an option that this council can take to, to codify what, what you mentioned to the mayor about?
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. No, so I guess, I apologize if I confused that. So obviously, with a criminal statute, through the legislature, they have, they have much greater ability in what they can and can't do in terms of making something criminal, escalating what that turns into. With something like an ordinance like this, arresting someone is, that is the end-all, be-all in terms of what you can do. We don't have, you know, through a municipal ordinance, there's nothing more severe beyond a single arrest per violation of the ordinance that, you know, we would be able to do. If there were any other specific things that people have been speaking about, like Council Getia mentioned, the, you know, no camping within 1,000 feet of a school ever, things like that can be made a part of the ordinance.
Well, and I mean, you said a single arrest, but if it's, if it's multiple within, you know, a short period of time, is, is, is nothing really?
We looked through a lot of different ordinances, and I, I can't think of a comparable situation where, that I was able to find that would fit into that narrative, because it's certainly something that we looked at as a possibility to put in front of the council. But we weren't able to identify anything in the civil side through an ordinance that, you know, to your point, I understand what you're saying. If you continue to do it, and you continue to do it, as the example the mayor gave, it makes sense for the punishment to get more severe. But we weren't able to find anything that would really fit with a municipal ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Manager, a couple of weeks ago, I mean, a month ago, I asked about the same type of fencing that the front of the school has, put it around the South Common itself. Have you gotten any numbers back on that yet? Anything else? Mr. Manager, a couple weeks ago, a month ago, I asked about the same type of fencing that the front of the school has, but around the South Common itself. Have you gotten any numbers back on that yet?
Through you, Mr. Manager. To you, Mr. Man? No, not yet. But we have looked at it. We find it to be something that's going to be extremely expensive, but maybe the DPD, Assistant City Manager may have had that, but unfortunate.
I'd like to have that answer as a report for a motion on the agenda for the next couple of meetings and then the council to take a look at it. Because again, I spoke to two teachers in the power over the weekend that spoke rave reviews about the front of the school, and I would both like to see that as a as a possible option for the back. So if we can get the hard numbers on that, so also make a decision on, that'd be great. So we're going to send this back to the motion by Counsel Getchea, second by Counsel Dakota, send it back to the manager's office for a for a slight change.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I'm sorry. One more question to the solicitor. But we're we're looking at adding the thousand foot from a school zone. Is that something, again, that could be added on with this is school zone? Because I know it it is something separate in other areas, like like drugs and and different things like that within a school zone is is kind of separate. Does that apply here as well?
I'm trying to think, would there be a scenario where a school zone would be outside of a thousand feet from a school?
So anything within a thousand feet or whatever is defined as a school zone already existing, would would that be separate than a non-school zone as it is with other instances?
Right, so, okay, I understand what you're saying. So for purposes of this ordinance, it would be the same thing. It's just the geographic thousand feet in. So there wouldn't be, say, five hundred feet is the school zone, there's a different, an additional five hundred feet that is within that thousand. It's it's all going to be the same for purposes of this ordinance. There wouldn't be anything that would sort of escalate that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Getchea, second by Counsel Dakota, also favors AI, opposed motion passes. Eight two ordinance to amend fee schedule for the parks.